Good evening, welcome back to the Legal Women Voters City Council Candidates Forum for the candidates for the Port Juaniemi City Council. And if you just recently came in and you have a cellphone, please put that on vibrate or silent. And one other instruction as far as the league, we don't have applause or any booing or anything like that, so just hold your energy till later and we'll be able to give them all a round of applause at the end. We drew numbers, that's why they're lined up. We're gonna begin in a moment with the opening statements. Each candidate will have a minute and a half for their opening statements. We'll begin with Ellis, work our way down. The questions though, we wanted to get those questions from you, so just raise your hand. We have volunteers with index cards and they'll come by and pick up your questions and we'll get as many of those asked as possible. And once you've filled out your question, just raise it again, we'll come pick it up. And you can ask as many questions as you want. I do wanna take a quick moment to do a personal thing. I would just like to recognize that we have two former mayors here, one who served way back in the eighties, seventies, nineties, somewhere. Orbin Carpenter and Murray Rosenbloom. If there's any other mayors, I apologize, let me go later. This is being streamed live on KATYTV.com and it'll also be available there to watch later on their archives. I'm David Marron, a member of the Legal Women Voters. Thank you all so much for coming out, we can't do this without you. And we think this is an important race, we'll hear from all the candidates.
Pleasure to be here, Mayor.
Yes, well, my pleasure. I only have that kind of power the rest of the year. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and begin, we have a minute and a half, and Ellis Green is our first candidate.
Good evening, and welcome to the People's House of the city of Port Juaniemi. I'd like to thank the Legal Women Voters for sponsoring the candidates forum, and also thank you, thank the candidates for their participation, and most of all, thank you for coming out to make sure that you are well-informed voters. Now, my colleagues and I on the city council over the last four years have worked very hard so that we could create a dynamic organization capable of dealing with the worst economic times in our nation's history. We've been able to navigate our community through some of the worst of the downturn, and now because of that, we have a stronger team and we have a stronger community. We are living in a, we're living with a balanced budget, save all the damage that the ocean can wreak on our pier and cause unplanned repairs and the continued damage from the sand because of the shortfall in replenishment. We've completed, uh, executive reorganization of our staffing. All of our bargaining units have signed tentative agreements, and economic vitality in our community is on the rise. To the fullest extent possible, we are engaged in acquisition and replenishment of sand on our beaches, which will be the greatest in, the largest amount in the last, you know, dozen, half dozen years or so. These are exciting times for our residents and our community. The opportunities abound. I would like to continue to be a part of this success. I ask for your vote. I pledge to continue to work hard and unselfishly for the benefits of all residents, not a select few. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Tom Figg.
Thank you, and thank you for coming out, this is an important event. I'm Tom Figg. I have a advanced degrees in urban planning and public administration. I'm a small business owner, self-employed. I have thirty-nine years of history in this community, I've lived here for that length of time. For twenty of those years, I ran the city's redevelopment and planning programs. I have an ambitious agenda, but the overarching goal that I have is to restore the community's confidence in its political leaders. And there's three components to that initiative. First is to rebuild relations with our key community partners, the Navy, the Harbor, the Juaniemi School District. In the recent past, I think some of those relations have been strained. Secondly is to engage the community in meaningful dialogue on the issues, to engage it at the beginning, at the point of making a decision, not after the decision has been made. We saw that situation discussed regarding Measure M. And then finally, to restore a sense of pride and teamwork within our workforce. It's time for a new perspective and a new approach, and that's what I bring to the table, and that's my motivation for running, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jim Hensley.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Jim Hensley. Is that on now? Oh, okay, thank you. My name is Jim Hensley. I believe the government should be of the people, by the people, and for the people. And I'm concerned, I'm concerned about some of the things that I've been witnessing in attending city council meetings here for the last three years. Each of these councilmen, our friends and mine, I consider, they're nice people, they're well-meaning, but I've seen things happen that have really bothered me. One, they came out and had a visit with me, the city manager, and said, "We need to speak in regard to Measure M." Now, we have a problem. If we don't have Measure M approved, we can't have any more crossing guards for kids. We have a problem with the Boys and Girls Club. Measure M is gonna be able to help us out. Measure M is gonna do everything, but I wanna see an honest government, and I'm here to see it's a people of the people, by the people, and for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is John Sharkey.
Uh, thank you, David. You know, I appreciate all of you coming out here at the end of a three-day weekend. Not everybody would come out to see a bunch of politicians. You are the opinion leaders for this community, you're the folks that people look to for leadership and guidance, and I appreciate your being here this evening. You know, it's no secret that these last few years have been kinda rough. They've been rough on your families, they've been rough on my family, they've been rough on our city. But Port Juaniemi has come through these difficult times without some of the disruptions that we've seen in other cities. We haven't had layoffs, we haven't had the discussions of bankruptcy that other cities have had, and the reason for that is that your city council has worked together to build up a rainy day, so when the rainy day did come, we were prepared. Now, I'm not gonna tell you that tomorrow the blue skies are gonna break out, the sun is gonna shine, and the birds are gonna sing. We all know there are problems, it's always gonna be a challenge here in our city, but I can tell you, we have come through the worst of times, and we are heading for the best of times. I believe we have a great team on our city council, your city council, and with your help and support, we will move this city forward and continue to make it an even better place for all of our people to live. Thank you.
Thank you. And those candidates who have done this with me before, you're used to going in order, but we're gonna jump around tonight, so I'm gonna keep everyone on their toes. Tom Figg, you're up first on the next question, and the question is, if you were aware that the "In God We Trust" sign in the council chamber lobby was a deterrent to some residents' involvement in city government, would you be willing to consider removing it, or at least moving it to a location not directly associated with the city council itself? You now have one minute, all candidates, one minute answers.
I wasn't aware that was a burning issue in the community, but I'm not really aware that there are that kind of, there's that kind of dissension, or that folks are offended by that kind of presence. The city has moved in a direction to try to be all-inclusive, such as the holiday lighting ceremony, which brings together all faiths, and I think "In God We Trust" is a common denominator in all those religions, so I'm not sure it needs to be addressed, but in fact, if folks are offended, then this is the place to have the discussion. I don't have an opinion on that.
Thank you. John Sharkey, same question to you. If you were aware about the "In God We Trust" sign in the lobby was a deterrent, would you be willing to consider moving it or removing it?
Well, we had a lengthy discussion about this at the, at the city council meeting, and when we get to issues of church-state separation, these are always very, very serious issues, because we have to remember that any government that's powerful enough to sanction religion is also powerful enough to prohibit it. And we considered this issue very carefully, and the "In God We Trust" sign was placed with private money, it was not placed with government money, it was placed by the people of Port Juaniemi, and that is a decision that the city council accepted and agreed with. And unless there's, there is a motive to change that, someone could bring that to the council, a council member could always raise that issue again, but I believe that that issue is settled. Thank you.
Ellis, same question to you about the sign.
Thank you. It's no secret that I'm the long-range here when it comes to the issue of the "In God We Trust" sign. I was against it, not because I'm not religious, or I'm not spiritual, or I don't respect other folks' religion or their spirituality. I just believe that God is your God, my God, but it's not everyone's God, and everyone should be welcomed and encouraged to come and feel comfortable in the People's House. I refer to that in my opening speech, and I mean it dearly, that everyone, everyone in the community, regardless of their belief, should feel comfortable coming here, and if it makes other people somehow nervous or uneasy, I think that's an infringement on the right side, so I don't believe in it, and yes.
Thank you, and we'll wrap up with Jim Hensley.
I kinda have mixed ideas about this. I do concur with Ellis in many ways, but the separation of church and state are some important things. It's not a big issue really to me if somebody wants to put it up there. The whole point being is we have many other issues in this community that needs to be resolved, so to argue about a small thing like that when we have these major things that's important, I'm not worried about whatsoever.
Thank you. Jim, we're gonna go ahead and start the next question with you, and the question is, what are your plans to support existing and new businesses in Port Juaniemi, other than the port?
David, thank you very much, I appreciate that question, it's a good one. What are my plans to help promote businesses within the city of Port Juaniemi? I have been going around to the businesses and find out that we have kind of a negative, let's not have too much, too many businesses, too much tourists here. That's not a good attitude. A lot of these businesses expect more people, and I don't think our city has been that proactive, and if I'm elected, I will be very tight in working with other businesses of all sorts to get more business in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellis, let's hear your thoughts about supporting existing and new businesses.
Thank you, David. I will, I have and I will continue to support businesses in our community. One of the possibility things to not mention about Measure M is the fact that it is designed to encourage home-based businesses, clean technology, green businesses by giving them a regular business license. That was one of the things that this council debated on when you hear folks say that we rushed your ordinance out. We didn't do that, we debated it, and it was, it's designed, it's built into the measure already to ensure that it encourages businesses such as green technology, clean energy type businesses, and home-based businesses in our city.
Thank you. And next up is John Sharkey on this question about promoting existing and new businesses.
Okay, thank you, sir. Well, I was one of the first people on board when I was in charge of the Economic Development Coalition of Ventura County, and one of the discussions at that time was that you have, you were better supporting, better off supporting your existing businesses rather than trying to grab businesses from somewhere else. And we do need to support our local business. We have had some tough times, no question about it. There's been struggles for everybody, but we are looking better. There are businesses coming to town, we have a new development coming up on Victoria that is gonna be mixed use, it looks like we might have a very interesting anchor store there. All that sort of thing will help, and this is, this feeds on itself, and to build on what Ellis said, yes, I want people to start businesses here. Remember, Hewlett-Packard started in a garage, Microsoft started in a motel room. We want people to come here, start businesses, open up. I would like Port Juaniemi to be the startup capital of Ventura County, and we are working to do that.
Thank you, John. And Tom, we'll wrap up with you on this question about business.
Well, I'd kinda revisit my opening remarks. First order of business is to build some confidence with our business community, I think Measure M has done a lot of harm in that regard. Chamber of Commerce came out against that measure because they were not consulted nor were their constituent members, so we have to rebuild those relations and confidence that, that we can be supportive and that we can attract businesses to fill our vacant spaces. One of my major goals is to establish, formalize an economic development program within our city. It would be dedicated to seeking external grant funds, it would be dedicated to trying to backfill redevelopment. There are another, a number of initiatives in Sacramento that are intending to replace redevelopment. We need to embrace those opportunities and hit the ground running. So, I, I think the first order of business, we gotta get our house in order, and we gotta rebuild those relations.
Thank you. John, we're gonna begin with you on the next question, and the question is, what would be your plan and priority to improve the recreational programs and facilities in Port Juaniemi?
Well, I believe we have a lot of, a lot of unused capacity in this city. You know, we have the gentleman's directing our tennis program right now, is sitting here with us in the audience. We got certainly Miranda Park, we got the tennis courts, we got the basketball courts, we got softball fields, we have soccer abilities. We've, in addition to that, we have, at the Orbin Carpenter Center, we have classroom space adjacent to a park and playground. So, our city right now is looking at a number of options for this. We are trying to explore different ways to maximize the opportunities for our citizens using all of this wonderful capacity that we have, that has quite frankly been a little underused, and that's gonna be one of the prime objectives over this next year, is to start getting good use out of all of the wonderful facilities we have in this city.
Thank you. Jim, same question to you. What are your plans about improving the recreational facilities and opportunities here?
We had a discussion earlier tonight. Is your mic coming in here? There we go. I had a discussion earlier this evening, we're coming in here with a fellow, and one of our, our thoughts was, the parks, they're kinda falling apart here. I mean, we have a beautiful city, and I think of cities like Renton and Seattle, Washington, where the parks are exceptionally beautiful, and it makes a whole different attitude for the community itself. I believe so far, we have kind of let this thing fall apart, and we need to rebuild it and pay more attention to it for our people, our citizens, and particularly our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on this one is Tom, and what would you plan, what would be your plan and priority for recreational facilities?
Well, I, I look at it as it's a kind of a two-part issue. One is facilities and the other is programming, and I would not disagree with my colleague here that a lot of our facilities are outdated and are falling into disrepair. We're seeing some positive strides with the rebuilding of the athletic center. There are various funding sources that we need to exploit, and as part of the economic development program, suggesting Community Facilities District, there's an infrastructure financing district that's recently been approved in Sacramento to refill or backfill redevelopment. So, there are funding opportunities to rebuild our infrastructure, specifically recreation. Now, we talk about programming, one of the things the city is looking at now is outsourcing some of its facilities and operations, but I think they need to take a look at their partners. Juaniemi School District is an example. During my employment at the city, we have a proud history of partnering, like joint use of parks and school playgrounds. Are you, yeah, I was waiting for that, I'm sorry.
We don't wanna let you down. All right. Ellis, we'll finish up with you about your thoughts on recreation facilities.
David, I think we already have these things in action. One of the issues, well, first of all, let me step, we have a great senior instructor that's been running a program that's got folks that are, you know, building themselves, and it's, it's an incredible story. But these guys don't know about that because they don't know this city, they don't know what's going on. They don't know that staff has just completed a battery of RFPs so that they can bring not one, but two major recreational facilities to our city to serve not only the youth of our community, but also the adults and possibly tourist and business interaction. Things are happening, it just takes a while to get to our city, but the Boys and Girls Club have not left our city, at the least as of yesterday.
Okay, and next up is John Sharkey.
Okay, yeah, it is kind of a puzzling question. You know, of the four of us on this day, I don't think there's a bigger supporter of the Boys and Girls Club than I am, but over the last several years, I've given them thousands of dollars. You know, I'm always, always at their fundraisers, I'm always contributing to them, I've always supported them, and, you know, I, Mr. Hensley says, you know, we can't afford, he talks about meeting with the city manager, which the city manager doesn't recall that meeting, by the way, or saying those things. It's not about we can't afford them, it's about maximizing the opportunities, as we discussed earlier, for, for using our facilities. We've got some tremendous opportunities here, there are some great ideas out there on the table for the Boys and Girls Club. And, you know, Ellis is right, you know, I foresee the Boys and Girls Club being an integral part of this city for a long time to come, and so, you know, the question is itself is a wee bit puzzling.
Thank you. Tom, we'll wrap up with you on this question about the Boys and Girls Club.
The Boys and Girls Club has a forty-year history in this community. The facility that they previously occupied in Pleasant Valley was specifically designed and built with the intent of having the Boys and Girls Club from an area of town that was being redeveloped because they were being displaced. I am certainly against another displacement, and I have a number of reasons for that. I spent a number of years coaching the Boys and Girls Club, various teams, and I found that these kids lack father figures, parental guidance, upwards of ninety percent of these kids come from low and moderate income homes. YMCA and others are a fee-based kind of model of service. We are going to exclude a lot of kids that will have nowhere to go if we do not have them reoccupy the athletic center.
Okay. Ellis, we're gonna start with you on the next question, and let's just dive right into it. So, tell us whether you oppose or support Measure M, and if you oppose it, how will you make up the money? Ellis, you're up first.
You'll never have any problem, David, with me knowing where I stand. I am for Measure M because Measure M belongs to the people of Port Juaniemi. You heard a lot of discussion here earlier today from the people that brought the money from San Francisco. The reason they brought the money from San Francisco, the reason that they put the, they put the lies out is because they can't vote, they don't live in Port Juaniemi. There's just so scant few of them that they are able to turn or to get on their side by giving them campaign contributions or supporting them, but Measure M is for the people, it's gonna improve the services, it's gonna improve the safety of our community, it's going to make it more livable, and I encourage every citizen to vote for it. Is that clear enough?
Thank you. Tom, same question to you, but I have to remind you, so if you, do you support or oppose, and if you do oppose, how would you make up for the one million dollars in expected revenue?
Sure. First and foremost, I certainly embrace the idea of updating the forty-year-old ordinance. I believe in the principles of fairness and equity, but that's not what Measure M is. You heard a lot about it earlier this, this evening. The city lacked consultation with the parties that were going to be most affected, the Navy, the Harbor, and the business community. It lacked analysis, it adopted something it didn't know what it was doing. It didn't have the analysis of how do you make a nexus, a connection between the impacts of business and the fees that you charge. The city acknowledges they didn't do their homework. Harbor revenues aren't taken into account. I was involved in, in the negotiations of revenue-sharing agreements with the Harbor District. Those revenues in part offset the impacts of the businesses at the Harbor, they're not taken into account. We hear the city is going to have hearings and, you know, promises, but the reality is, the ordinance sets maximum rates that go into effect after it's adopted. The city isn't compelled to have hearings, it's not compelled to reduce those rates. The only thing we know about this ordinance is that home-based businesses such as John Sharkey are gonna get a free ride.
Okay, Tom, I do wanna give you another fifteen seconds, if you want to answer the other part of the question, which was, how would you make up for the revenue that won't be raised?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fifteen more seconds.
Well, first of all, as I said before, I agree with updating the ordinance. The way it's crafted is not correct, so the first order of business is to start anew, and you go back and do the right things, consult those that are gonna be most affected, and do your homework and analysis, and establish the nexus between the fees charged and the impacts of those businesses.
Okay, thank you very much, and we're back to one-minute answers. Jim Hensley, same question to you. Do you support Measure M or do you oppose it, and if you oppose it, how would you make up for the estimated one million dollars?
I personally do not believe Measure M is a good measure. I've read it. How many people in this audience have sought, bothered to read that whole puppy? It's confusing, it's convoluted, and it can be drafted a lot of different ways, okay? And when the car salesman tell you, "Trust me, I'm not gonna raise too much high, I'm gonna give you a good deal, trust me, I won't lie to you," I kinda don't believe that necessarily. Measure M needs to go away, and we've got to do something that's better for it, we need to work with the port, we need to work with the Navy base, and that can be done, not blocking people out.
I was gonna raise that one, I have another second.
Oh, do I have another five seconds for that? No?
You have about ten more seconds, I'm sorry, six to...
Pardon?
You have another ten seconds.
Okay. There's a lot of ways to build revenue. I went to a city council meeting recently, and they said, "We don't want more tourists here, we don't have a way to grab their dollar." Come on, give me a break. A lot of the residents I talked to sure want more business here, there is ways to promote business. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna wrap up this question with John Sharkey. Again, John, do you support or oppose Measure M?
Well, I support Measure M because it's good for Port Juaniemi, it's about Port Juaniemi, it's not about the Oxnard Harbor District, or folks from Seattle, or lobbyists from San Francisco. You know, there's, there's talk about, "Well, we should've engaged these people." Well, we tried. I'm tired of that chivalry. We went and tried to talk to some of those businesses, you know what they told us? "We don't wanna talk to you, all we wanna do is beat you. We wanna beat you." That's what they told us. So, you can play kissy-kissy, nice-nice if you want, but that doesn't work with some folks. You know, the fact of the matter is, when you look at the opponents that the Harbor District has managed to scare up around the county, do you realize none of them, not a one of them, ever bothered to talk to anybody at the city, get the other side of the story? You know, the Fire Force on the council, we know a lot of people around this county. There were three people that called us, Steve Barber, BMW, Julia Brownlee, and Charlotte Craver from Camry. Those are the three people in the county that bothered to get the other side of the story. So, I'm a little tired that I'm gonna get Measure M.
Okay, Tom, we're gonna start with you on the next question, and this is about, would you continue the cooperative funding for the crossing guard program on Santa Clara Ventura roads, not only for this year, but also to ensure safety of the children for future years? What's your position on that?
Yes, absolutely, although I would like to explore other alternatives, like using volunteers, maybe to reduce the expense of the overall program. I'm quite disappointed how the city went about their business and basically laid a problem with the doorstep of the Juaniemi School District. Again, another black eye of one of our partners. Several weeks ago, in these council chambers, the superintendent of schools were here, was here to address the council and offer their partnership, and he was unceremoniously told to shut up and sit down. Now, you can look at that on the website, it's offensive. I spent the next day trying to smooth over rough edges as a result of that antique. We need to have partnerships, true partnerships, so absolutely, we need to continue the crossing guards in partnership.
Thank you. John Sharkey, you're up next, your position on continuing the crossing guard program?
Well, we, we've got an agreement with the school district, we're waiting for them to sign it and get it back to us. As soon as they do that, we're ready to roll. We spent three years working on this, and once again, it's very hard to negotiate with someone that doesn't wanna talk to you. I spent an hour and a half in the superintendent's office, across his desk. The only thing I heard from him was, "No, no, hell no, get out of my office." That's not negotiation. Fact is, with the loss of redevelopment, we, eight hundred thousand dollars was taken right out of our city. That was distributed to all other agencies around the county, including the school district. All we're asking to do is what a majority of the cities in this county do, and that's share the cost of the, of the crossing guards. We do have an agreement. We're waiting for the school district, once again, to sign it and get it back to us, they want to ready to roll. It's a problem solved.
Thank you. Ellis, you're up next on the question about continuing the crossing guard program.
I do think school crossing guard program... I do think school crossing guard programs should continue, including Port Wainimi. I think that it should be under the auspices of the school district, which the law designates the city as the agency to determine where it belongs. So what do we do? We follow the law. We go to them and we talk to them for three years about partner and being involved in the cross-school crossing guard program for the kids. And it gets dragged out. And then we get accused of docking it at the last minute. But absolutely, I think the school district has seen the error in the ways. And I think, I expect it will have a long-term partnership once they sign the agreement.
Thank you. Jim Hensley, we'll wrap up with you. What's your position on the crossing guard program?
From the get-go, I've really been concerned how people, leaders of this community, get set back and allow little kids to go to school without any crossing guards. They try to blame, they try to blame the school district. It isn't a school district. It's a public safety. And this was being used as an excuse to get Measure M going on when the city council approves a raise for the city manager. Now, why did they do that? Why didn't they implement the crossing guards right off the get? That's criminal, in my opinion.
Thank you. And we're going to start the next question with John. What is your position on the governance of the Port of Wainimi, the city of Port of Wainimi, of Port Wainimi? So how about you just share with us your views?
The Oxnard Harbor District?
The Oxnard Harbor District.
Yeah, first of all, the crossing guards had nothing to do with Measure M. Measure M was back ten years. So nothing to do with it. That's conflating the issues. The Oxnard Harbor District is unique for a port of this size. You know, one of the candidates mentioned Seattle having money. Well, the Port of Seattle, the city has representation on their board. There's not another deep-water port on the West Coast that's governed this way. It was set up this way. Richard Bard, when he set the port up, had the opportunity to set up a city, decided that was too much work, he set the port up. We've got a large industrial use in the middle of our city over which we have absolutely no control. None of the commissioners lives in Port Wainimi. None of their votes are here. Everybody in Port Wainimi could vote against them and still, they'd still be elected because they get all the votes in Oxnard. There's a real problem here. We have tried to set up a joint committee to work through difficulties. It doesn't seem to work on their side. They go and hire the lawyers from the city of Bell, write out the draft.
Okay, good.
We have to change something.
Stop it there. And we're going to move on to Jim Hensley. What is your position, Jim, on the governance of the Oxnard Harbor District, working with the city? Okay, I'm still trying to control tonight, if you guys don't mind. Thank you. Jim, so what is your position on the Oxnard Harbor District and the governance and how it works with the city of Port Wainimi?
I have a firm belief that the Oxnard Harbor District, Port of Wainimi, is a good functioning organization. It's done extremely well. It's one of the largest economic engines in this county, along with the Navy Base. It's the two biggest. And it can be done quite well. Now, people claim, in the city council, that they reached out to them and it was just told to buzz off. Now, I don't believe that because I know a lot of people in the port too. So consequently, we need to have a communication with the port. And the city could take a long way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom, your position about the Oxnard Harbor District and how it works with the city of Port Wainimi?
Some years ago, I see Bob Raitman here, former executive director of LaFco. The city was successful in contracting the boundaries of the Harbor District, which basically encompassed the entire county. And it contracted it to the area most impacted, the city of Wainimi and the city of Oxnard. So the issue here is not, is it a relevant district? It is. The question is, should we have more representation from the citizens themselves from Port Wainimi? Absolutely. But to say that we need to change the governing structure of the body, I'm not, I'm not on board with that idea. We have revenue-sharing agreements, and I disagree with Mr. Sharkey's assessment. We do have control. It's called land use control. And that's what allowed us to craft several revenue-sharing agreements with the Oxnard Harbor District. Now, the city is in battle in litigation with the Harbor District at this point in time. And that's one of my platforms, is to resolve cooperatively that litigation for the benefit of both the agencies. So, thank you.
And Ellis, we'll wrap up with you. Share with us, please, your thoughts about the Oxnard Harbor District and working with the city.
The Oxnard Harbor District does not work with the city. The Oxnard Harbor District, in recent times, has only sued the city time after time after time. The Oxnard Harbor District has taken and changed their accounting method only when it comes to paying the residents of the city of Port Wainimi. The Oxnard Harbor District does not give representation to the city. What the Oxnard Harbor District likes to do is tell the city, they threw their minions here tonight, were telling our residents how they should vote. Yet you can't vote one of your resident representatives onto that board. So no, the people of Port Wainimi, though they bear the brunt of all of the industrialization from that port, including this reduced lifespan, you can go to public health and look it up. We bear all that brunt, but we don't have the representation. Where are these older times who'd go throw tea into that harbor?
Thank you, Ellis. Ellis, since you're on the roll, we'll stay with you.
All right.
But gentlemen, let's learn a little bit about you personally. So there's several questions here. I'm trying to combine them. How long have you lived in Port Wainimi? What makes you run? Mr. Fig, there's actually one for you about your wife's employed by the city. Is that going to be a conflict? But Ellis, let's start with you. Just tell us, how long have you lived here? Why are you running? Tell us about yourself.
I've run for sixteen, I've lived in the city for sixteen years. I have been acquaintance for the city for almost twenty years. I'm running because I believe the city. I really love the city. I love the residents. I think this city needs to have someone that will fight for us. We've let them take the sand off our beach. We've let them tell us that they won't pay, don't have to pay our business tax. And I'm one of those people that think it's time for this city to stand up and the council to stand up for its residents. We don't have to kowtow to them. You hear some of the candidates saying, oh, I love them, they're doing fine. I think that it could change, but I don't want... We should be represented on the board for the Oxnard Harbor District. We should have Measure M. And we should be able to seek and find those things that are beautiful about our community and our residents can enjoy them.
Thank you. So Tom, let's learn a little bit about you. How long have you lived in the city? Why are you running? And also, I want to give you a chance to address the question. That's, if your wife is working here, would you have to recuse? Or maybe you could tell us when you would have to recuse yourself?
Sure. I think I already introduced myself. Thirty-nine-year resident, twenty of those years was spent rebuilding the city. I had the privilege of working for an incredible city council and a visionary leadership. And we all were on the same page and did great things. We're way off of that model today. And I want to bring that model back. It's that simple. What was the other question about my wife?
Yes.
Honey, thank you for coming. In the event that there is an issue of economic conflict, I will certainly defer to the city attorney and recuse myself when it's necessary. I don't expect that'll be on a regular basis, but I will defer to the counsel of our attorney.
Okay, thank you. Jim, how long have you lived in the city? What makes you run?
I've lived in the city of...
I've lived in the city of Port Wainimi for three and a half years, almost four years now. I did live in Silver Strand for almost thirteen years. I was served on the Channel Islands Beach Community Service District over there, a board member. I had to give up the seat when I moved up here. But I love Port Wainimi. I love Wainimi Bay. They have a swimming pool that's eighty-eight degrees. And I like to swim every day when I can. Now, the one thing that concerns me is we don't see a lot of stuff, number one, of the sand. When I was over there at Port Wainimi, the sand was being deposited primarily on the Silver Strand Beach. Number two, I'm a strong union supporter. Unions built America. And when organizations do not help unions, we're in trouble. They're minimizing the unions. We've got to start back and bring middle class back again. Thank you.
Thank you. John, we'll wrap up with you. How long have you been here? What makes you tick?
Okay, it was November nineteenth. I grew up on the East Coast, on Cape Cod. And I got here and it was a drizzly rainy cold day. And I got out of my car and I says, ah, this feels like home. And it was. And I've been here ever since. And this is where I made my life. And everything I've done for the last twenty years has been to make this a better city for all of us. And Ellis is right. I think there's a new day dawning in Port Wainimi. We're not, I always hated that, oh, we're just, just poor little Port Wainimi, we can't do anything. No, I always hated that attitude. Now, we are strong and powerful. We may be small, but we are mighty. And I believe we are heading into the future. And that's, that's why I'm running one more time. Thank you.
Thank you. And this will be the last question. We're going to start with you, Tom. We've touched on this, but I think it's a very important issue. So I want to give everybody a chance to weigh in. The crux of the question is redevelopment has hurt the city, losing those funds. So what are we going to do? What will you do to make up for the shortfall? What specifically is what this questioner is asking? Can you do to make up for that shortfall from the loss of the redevelopment funding? And the quote here is that it probably hurts you by about half a million to a million dollars. So Tom, what are your thoughts about promoting revenue or increasing revenue?
Well, I mentioned earlier, one of my platforms is to establish an economic development program that goes after external grants. I was involved in doing that for many years. And I know there's money out there to be had, particularly when we partner with people like the Navy and the Harbor. They bring added value to being able to qualify for those funds. So again, I get back to the core of my platform, and that is partnering. The other thing, there are emerging tools to replace redevelopment. I already mentioned the Infrastructure Financing District. That was recently passed in Sacramento. And it gives us a vehicle to backfill at least doing infrastructure capital improvements. So there are programs to be exploited. And that's why we'd like to have a dedicated economic development program within the city to go after those opportunities. We also have the Harbor District. And it's yet to be seen how the resolution will work regarding the revenue-sharing agreements. But I'm confident that we can get that resolved and it will be beneficial to us as well as them.
Thank you. John Sharkey, what will you do to make up for the shortfall?
Well, obviously, things have changed a lot in twenty years. Some of the tools that we got available to us are no longer available. Tom's right, the Infrastructure Financing District is a very hopeful sign coming out of Sacramento. Let's see it get implemented. We certainly have to be on board with that. People don't realize how important redevelopment was to us. You hear a lot of horror stories about abuse. But in our city, it is a very, very important factor in creating the city you see today. It's always tough for a city that's not on a freeway. And we can't be Camarillo and an outlook mall, we'll never have an auto mall. So we have to be aggressive. We have to keep, do things like keep our business license or ordinance up to date. We have to do all we can to attract development. The property over on Victoria, that's, that's well underway. That's going to happen. The remaining open space we have is at Market Street where our downtown used to be. That's one of the reasons I ran for office, a long time ago. And we still have some, still hopeful that we can recreate our downtown there.
Thank you, John. Ellis, same question to you. How will you make up for the half a million to a million dollar shortfall from the loss of redevelopment?
Number one, I'm very hopeful that after the midterm elections, the government is going to sign to law some of the bills that are working its way to them that will be redevelopment-type vehicles, not in the same fashion as before, where we may be able to have some exclusion, including areas zones adjacent to some of the businesses that we've got existing here. In addition to that, I'd like to see us still capitalize off of our shore, our coast. It would be great if we could build, for instance, a kiddie pool park down on the coast. Maybe that would help to slow some of the sand erosion. Also, it would give us, since we've become a regional park anyway, it would give us a chance to capitalize on some of the funds that being brought in.
Thank you. Jim, we're going to wrap up with you. What are your ideas?
Mr. Green struck something really close.
Mr. Green struck something very close, near and dear to me. We need something for facility for water, for kids, for adults. And being, or putting an aquatic center down by the beach could be an excellent draw if it's done properly. Also, we need to encourage business. We need to encourage things that are good business draw. We're not doing that right now. We have a lot of the elements to do it, but we're not doing it. And it can be done. And I'm going to reach out more to the port and to the Navy Base and see that we have better things and better relationships instead of being argumentative with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we've, didn't get to all the questions, but almost all of them. But we do need to start on our closing statements. Do you want to mention that there is one candidate who is not here tonight, Norm Brefa, who is running, but he had family concerns. And so he was unable to be here. And as a reminder, on November fourth, you'll be voting for three. That's this election, you'll be voting for three candidates.
When did the other candidate or the other incumbent tell us?
He told us immediately. He told us immediately. He wanted to be here, but was unable. So we're going to reverse the order. And John Sharkey, you'll be first on the closing statements. You have a minute and a half, one and a half minutes.
All right, thank you, David. You know, city council elections are not like some of the other elections you may have seen around the country. This isn't two candidates duking it out, trying to get your vote. You have three votes here. And you're selecting a team. You're selecting the team that will represent you for the next two years. Now, I happen to think we've got a pretty good team in place here. We've come through some very difficult times. We're looking to build a better future for our city. But it's not up to me to select that team. It's up to you. And so when you do cast those three precious votes, I hope you will consider the record that this team has amassed. I believe this is a winning team, Ellis Green and Norm Brefa and myself. And I firmly believe that all of us together can move Port Wainimi into the future we will all be proud of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jim Hensley.
Contrary to what the mayor states, I personally feel that this city could do much better. A quarter of a century under the same leadership has kind of kept us into a quagmire. This needs to become a modernized city and with some new ideas. And I feel with new injection of blood on the city council, we can do a lot of things in this community and make it a good, enjoyable place to live, increase our police department, increase our Boys and Girls Club, and do a lot of things. But if we keep the same standard that's been going, it's not going to work that much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Tom Fig. You have one and a half minutes.
Thank you. This city's legacy is built on leadership that's firmly rooted in its community. It's selfless in its decision-making. And it fosters relations, positive relations with its partners. Somehow, somewhere, we got off of that model. And I want to bring it back. I'm a problem solver by nature. I'm a collaborator by trade. And those are important skills that need to be brought to the equation. And that's what I offer. I urge you to visit my website, tomfig.com, that's an easy one, to learn more about me and the broadness of my platform. We've got to stop vilifying people. Big, bad multinational corporations, minions. We've got to stop name-calling here. Let's get back to the friendly in the city by the sea. I was greatly offended by Mayor Sharkey's statement in the press that anybody that's opposed to Measure M is opposed to Port Wainimi. I have thirty-nine years invested in this community. And I'll be damned if somebody makes those kinds of remarks. So enough said, I look forward to your support.
Thank you. And our next candidate is Ellis Green.
I'm almost afraid to speak after that, so much anger. I'm almost afraid to speak after that, so much anger. I don't have that anger. What I have is energy. I bring energy to my duties as a council member representing the people, and I try to make work and make that productive. I understand if you don't have anything or any confidence that you can deliver, then you have to tear someone down. I came here to have built this city up. I want to build each of the departments. I've heard over and over tonight, the candidates saying that we need to bring business, we're not doing anything for business. Well, that man standing back there against the wall, Greg Brown, has brought a Ross Dress Flesha new store to our city. He's brought a brand-new Taco Bell, they're going to scrape and rebuild. I believe he's also got a scraping rebuild for the McDonald's. He had rested his staff with our new city manager, Cynthia Haas, have been working their tails off. And there's a lot of things that are in the pipeline that are going to come through. But you don't hear those if the Oxnard Harbor District doesn't put them in their talking points, because they don't have them. So, you know, all I'm saying, I'm here for you, the residents. I'm not here for Oxnard Harbor District, and I wish they would quit speaking for the Navy, because the Navy has told us they're not going to get in the Oxnard Harbor District's fight. Thank you all, I wish you all the best, please be sure to vote.
Thank you. Special opportunity to tell you about in a moment, but first, let's have a round of applause. A couple of points. First of all, I'd like to remind everybody, it is on KDYTV. We're grateful to Bob and Peter for their help tonight. We're also grateful to our lead volunteers, Susan, Carmen, Frances, Mary, Bob, and Pam. Thank you all very much. And now, that special opportunity that I mentioned, at the back of the room is the lead membership table. You can pick up flyers and learn how to become a member. I'm a member, it's open to men. You can even just take it and make a donation to help support these kind of things that we do. So anything would be very much appreciated. Thank you.